All right, it's six o'clock, so we will get started. This is the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, November thirtieth. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Healy's March twenty nine twenty twenty three revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of planning board will be conducted both in person and by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person or for those who wish to do so remotely, may by following the instructions on the agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In addition, pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty eight, section twenty F, after notifying the Chair of a public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any such recording. Any members of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the Chair. The listings of the agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And per section two forty one one of the town code, except for procedural and or housekeeping matters, town residents should have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote. At a time before the the board votes on that item, such residents will be allowed as much time as a proponent of an item is permitted to have. So this meeting is being recorded and uh, we don't have to do a roll call agenda, but well, I guess we will, right? Jackie Kane?
I'm here.
You're here? Pedro Pachana?
Yeah.
Brandy Nelson, um, absent at present are Jeremy Ega and Jonathan Hankin. All right, uh, do we have any form A's? I don't believe so. No form A's. Um, so we'll move on to the minutes of November ninth. Uh, do we have a motion to approve as amended?
Uh, I moved.
Thank you, Malcolm. I wanted to say Jonathan because I get so reflexive.
Exactly.
Thank you. Um, any discussion? All in favor? Any votes? Okay. Um, so we'll move on to um, our discussion on housing opportunities. This has been an open item. Um, we have been talking through a a number of different um, alternative types of housing and um, some model zoning language and definitions in our code that we have or don't have. Um, in the interest of hopefully making some decisions about whether or not we want to make any amendments for town meeting of the upcoming year. Um, we are kind of in information gathering phase, I would say, um, at this point. Um. So Pedro has been seeking out people who can help inform our discussion. Do you want to introduce our guests?
Sure, welcome from Berkshire Housing. I mean, Peltier is here with us today and June Wolf has joined us from Construct. He's joined us uh, on on the Zoom to discuss the congregate living by law language and to tell us a little bit about either their experience or their thoughts about this type of uh, of living.
Sure, sure. Um, will you um, say your name slowly for Kim so she can make sure she's got it in her record?
Sure, it's Eileen wants here.
Okay. Kim, you got that? We'll get it, okay. Um, Eileen, do you want to go first? I think we we are interested um, to hear from, yeah, come, feel free to.
Do you want to get near an owl?
Um, if you yeah, it will, it will pick you up.
I want to sit next to you. I actually would be interested in having June go first just because, you know, you have more immediate experience with this June, so and then I can maybe add some color commentary to that if that makes sense to your comment.
Sure, that'd be fine. Um, well, I'll start by saying I'm delighted that the planning board is uh, looking into all kinds of creative ways to uh, add housing stock to your town, so uh, applaud you for that. And um, and I'm glad that the question of congregate living is coming up because uh, it is one of the things people do when they uh, get stuck and they just can't get housed in a conventional way. So they either do it, um, you know, kind of their own way. Uh, or they, or they uh, it it's better, you know, to have some guidelines for the town on how to structure that. And Construct has done it a couple of different times and because of the interpretation of the housing law by the building inspector at the time, uh, we were very limited in what we could do. So we had, we had buildings that would house twelve and we were limited to housing five. Um, so it really wasn't efficient that way. And so I'm delighted that uh, the planning board is considering this. Um, I did have an opportunity to look at the draft of uh, what um, you wrote up for um, planning board and I do have some comments on it, which I sent um, in, so I, has everyone seen them or just Pedro?
I did send them out to everybody at the last meeting.
Great.
Oh, okay, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Okay, Pedro and Pedro did send in a draft at the last meeting. Jonathan had made comments on those.
Okay.
Um, I didn't realize those incorporated uh, your, your suggestions.
Okay, um, so I, I think most of it, uh, I thought it was really, you know, uh, carefully thought out and I appreciated that. There were a couple of places uh, where I think you've um, you kind of gotten yourself into a legal tangle. Um, or you, uh, let me put it another way, you will have, you will put the owner operators of these properties into a legal tangle. Because housing court does not necessarily recognize zoning law as their law. So um, housing court has, is its own kingdom. And and so they, um, there are certain things that they uh, do or require that is in conflict with we, with your draft. So for one example would be um, your requirement for a live-in manager. Now, I think if you wanted to um, allow for a live-in manager, that would be one thing, uh, but a live-in manager, so um, if, if the person who owns the building hires someone to live in the building, um, they are now both that person's employer and that person's landlord. Now, that doesn't sound like much of a conflict until one or other of those relationships end. So if the employment relationship ends, they are still that landlord, but if they have a contract to collect zero rent from that person, um, that is the contract that the housing court will honor. And it will be a long and arduous process to change that. And um, the housing court is not known for speed. Uh, it takes a very long time to be heard in front of them and uh, and they don't like to rush things, so they'll take months and months and months to figure that out, which kind of puts you in a pickle or your owner operator in a pickle because that person is still taking up the manager's quarters. So now they either have to sacrifice another room to a second manager, um, or they have to be out of compliance with your law. Uh, and in the meantime, they're losing money. I mean, they're arguably losing money in the first place. So I kind of want to I'd um, I mean, maybe Eileen wants to weigh in and then I'd really like to hear like, what's the reasoning for that and maybe um, maybe we can try to figure out another way to make that more workable.
Yeah, can I ask June just for clarification in terms of um, the catch twenty-two that that would create? So you you think even in the instance of housing was part of one's compensation and a condition of their employment, you still couldn't get someone out of the space?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. So housing court um, is strictly about housing court and and tenancy. A tenancy is defined much more broadly than you would think. You, if you, if you stay on your friend's couch for a week and you decide to stay longer, that's a tenancy and they cannot make you leave. Like, that's, it's really very, very strict. Massachusetts is an extraordinarily tenant-friendly state. Good for us, that's good. But it does make it hard to be a landlord, um, even when you didn't mean to be a landlord. So by, by doing this, you're, you're, you're setting the owner operators up and I think any savvy owner operator would probably just say, nope, not participating in that. So it would not really increase uh, inventory if people refuse to do it.
Yeah, and I'll add a, agree with everything that June was saying. I actually had called out that, that as well. I think it's, it's also, it's not financially viable when you're talking about a small, typically these are like June was saying, you know, maybe twelve, eight, you know, those kind of numbers, it's really challenging to make it pencil out anyways. So when you're kind of giving up a unit, um, and not collecting uh, rent on that unit makes it financially challenging. But more importantly for me, and just sort of my theme comments are all around, I think, the issue of equity, just like why are we asking this in this particular housing? Are we making a judgment about who might be living there, that they need somebody watching them? We don't ask typical um, landlords in apartment buildings to have somebody twenty-four hours a day watching over the situation. So I think that this might be a little bit of a dated language and approach to things that makes me a little uncomfortable.
Um,
I support that.
My concern would be, you know, in a, in a, in an arrangement with uh, open common space. How do you manage that uh, common space and how do you manage uh, interaction between tenants in that?
So, so that's a, that's a great question. Uh, is it, is it Malcolm? And um, and I, I actually have some experience with that. Um, Eileen, do you, or should I go ahead?
You go ahead, no, no.
Okay.
Like I said, I'll be your caller.
Okay, so um, yeah, so we actually have some experience with that and um, it, what we do in particular is um, called a, it's a, it's a co-living model, which we call um, a co-housing model, which we call co-living because um, we're doing this at Windflower. And now we have a manager of the property, but she doesn't live there. She um, she just regularly meets with people. Um, and there, you know, they have house meetings and they try to talk through, you know, any issues that come up about shared space. And I have to tell you, I am astounded at how successful it has been. I seriously had reservations about this when we started doing it because I used to be an RA in a dorm and, you know, at school and, you know, so it, it was, that's what I was thinking it was going to be like. And it, it is not like that. Um, in fact, it's pretty wonderful. We have this uh, multiple generations of people and I was there for a house meeting and this young man is like talking to this elderly woman and he's like, let me come and fix your TV, like you need a better remote, you know, and and just, you know, just kind, that kind of thing. Um, I think the key here is um, that it, the intentionality of it. That the, the managers need to know that um, you don't take people because they're desperate. You take people because they, they intend to live in community. It's not for everyone. It really isn't. Um, so I can see um, where you would have reservations. I certainly did. You know, um, we, as, as I say, we have done congregate housing before and we've, but we've done it in a different way. It was kind of a, kind of a theme, kind of uh, congregate housing. This is more um, in response to the housing shortage and being able to take a certain cohort of people who, you know, are willing to live in that situation. The people who aren't willing to live in that situation, that's why we keep the leases to thirty days, you know, because they can move on and, and say, no, yeah, I thought this was going to work and it's not going to work for me. So we do, as Eileen says, we need to treat everyone like adults. We're not housing, you know, uh, it's not a dorm. We are, we are looking at people who deliberately make this choice and they are responsible for their behavior.
So I have a, a couple examples, I guess, to share. So, uh, you know, we have a portfolio of just under a thousand apartments. The vast majority of those twenty-five different projects that we have have common spaces, right? So we also have a property manager um, who's managing the property. They are not on site all the time. In fact, you know, most of our property managers have several buildings that they're managing at a time. Um, but, you know, we have uh, community rooms and and community spaces and um, the property manager's role is to work with the residents around, how do we want to utilize that? I mean, I'll give you a, a kind of silly example, you know, Christmas decorations are not, right? So there's, there's a conversation about that, right? I mean, that, that can be a really challenging conversation today in twenty twenty-three. Um, so, you know, it's a kind of thing that, that is the role of the property manager to, to do that. Um, but a better example, I think that's more applicable, is I have a lot of experience with recovery residents of sober living environments. Um, and that is where people similarly to the co-housing model are choosing to live in community. Um, you know, if you, if you know really anything about recovery, it's about community, right? So they have, you know, shared uh, kitchens, shared living rooms, um, and they have house meetings weekly, they, and they peer regulate in recovery residence. So there is a house manager, but that house manager again does not live on site, right? They're checking and they're kind of facilitating things. They'll, you know, do some mediation if needed. Um, but as June said, you know, you're treating people like, like adults. You're allowing them to kind of self-manage and self-regulate things. Um, and, you know, I think at the end of the day, what we have to remember is that these are individuals' homes. So, you know, we're uh, in the process of developing permanent supportive housing for people who are coming directly out of homelessness. They have complex life resumes, you know, they have a variety of different challenges. But again, we cannot require them to, you know, access services. It's their home, right? And ideally, um, what they're getting out of that experience is community, um, and a warm handoff to services that are usually somewhere else, right? But I think people kind of want to contain the situation and say, oh, we're going to do, take care of everything right there and we're going to watch them and whatever, but we wouldn't want to be told that we have to, you know, do everything sort of in our home. So, um, you know, recovery residents are, uh, you know, a model around the country. They can work really well and they're a good example of, um, how effective it can be to use that sort of house manager, but not have that, having them twenty-four seven watch. And I have to say, some of the most powerful experiences I've ever seen are um, talking with people who are living in recovery. So they're dealing with like an acute challenge, right? They're people who are coming right out of um, inpatient um, detox, they're moving into rehab, they're very vulnerable and, and they watch each other and they take care of each other in a really powerful way. So I think it's, I really like the, the shared housing model. I think there's a lot of potential in it, but I think we have to be careful to not just because uh, you know, they're, they're living in what we think of as sort of a different way to over-regulate it, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not worried. I mean, actually, I, I hear what you're saying about the living manager. I, I, that's, I mean, it's not a big deal for me anyway. Um, one, one of the big deals for me though is um, uh, is, is the question of, uh, you know, we're, we're debating the question of whether congregate housing in Great Barrington should be by right or by special permit. And I feel comfortable with uh, Berkshire Housing and Construct and CDC, uh, you know, uh, you know, or non, housing nonprofits, if you will. Uh, you know, responsibly, um, hosting uh, co-living arrangements. What I'm worried about are slum lords coming in using by right to buy a house, chop it up into pieces and then, and then walk away.
And I would say honestly, I agree with you and that's, it's not so much um, trying to be kind of ascending and watch residents, because our interest is to provide a range of housing types for a range of different residents in our community. But we've been debating, how do we, how do we maintain that quality at a level that is equitable um, for the residents? And slum lords has been a conversation we've been trying to figure out how to, how to avoid. You know, because if I do this independently, I'm not held to the same standard necessarily as you. And it can be hard to have building code enforcement, quite honestly, if that's our only failsafe.
Yeah, I mean, uh, if it's by right, I mean, it's uh, it's by right. Uh, so I mean, I'm, I'm curious as to what you guys would think was acceptable to um, uh, go to that, if you will, uh, landlord. So I, I, and I think that's important in this kind of arrangement because it can be abused. Um, and it has been extorted.
One thing.
But, but one can make the argument that any landlord arrangement can be abused and has been extorted. And there's really no telling whether somebody who makes a good presentation to us is going to end up being an absentee landlord. There's just, there's just, it's an unknown and it's a risk.
I, I think though, part of this conversation also stems from just like a simple community economics standpoint, like we had had a conversation at one point about only allowing this by right for nonprofit partners, right? But do we need to be thinking and worried about how many properties then come off the tax rolls if we're only allowing this for nonprofit partners, for instance?
Yeah.
You know, yes.
Well, it's interesting because, you know, I, I, my comment around the whole management plan was sort of like, are you, my first reaction was like, well, you're making everybody do that. Why isn't it different? But I hear what you're saying. You know, that there, there is a difference around it and maybe I can't believe I'm going to say this because, you know, living in the world of going through lots of zoning processes, maybe that's a reasonable compromise, though, that not, that it has to be a nonprofit, but that it does have to be vetted. There needs to be. I, I mean, at least that would force the um, conversation about what that looks like and the kind of thing, like June and I are just saying, oh yeah, of course, the house managers we know have a weekly house meeting and blah, 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 blah. It would be pretty easy to develop that plan for us, but others may not even be thinking about that. And then, you know, that, I can see where you'd be worried about some challenges. So, I don't know, I mean, yeah, I'm almost buying that you need to have some sort of.
Well, so I, I have a, a kind of a compromised idea. Um, I, I hear what you're saying about it would need to be enforceable. Um, and I think it would be reasonable, um, even by right, to require a management plan. Um, so, you know, um, someone who was doing this, um, you know, you have other rules that they need to comply with, um, safety rules and parking rules and things like that. And so the, the rule, you know, to, to submit a management plan so that at least they have to think it through, like, who's, who's making decisions? What's the structure of, you know, of the decision-making process and um, who's handling conflicts and what's the structure of that process, et cetera?
Thank you, that's helpful.
It is.
Yeah. I mean, e- even things like, you know, I think what we're trying to hedge against is like a, a big old Victorian. We, we actually have almost an example of a big old Victorian with ten rooms that somebody now can make a ton of money renting ten rooms to individual people, but nobody plows the snow, nobody picks up the garbage, and we end up with a property maintenance issue and a nuisance to neighbors. And, and so we're just trying to think. We hate to put a dark, you know, a dark spot on it, but we want to try and think through where could this go wrong so that we can try and get ahead of it.
I'm not being a specialist in this area. I'm just thinking, if somebody's buying that house, is there no due diligence on their background of whether they've committed a felony or?
I can buy a house, you could buy.
I know, I mean, I just, I mean, I've bought a house and I've never thought about it, but I just feel like I don't want
Yeah, theft.
I mean, I'm thinking of other businesses, you do due diligence on the partner. And this is my, just sitting here.
By the people who lend the money, unless they have money to pay cash, banks are going to be I think less likely to lend money to people who, that, that, you know, complicated.
But as a property owner, they, they would still be required to, you know, with, I assume there are, there are uh, rules within Great Barrington. I mean, you, you don't have an inspection program, right, where you're, yeah. Um, you know, where if they're not plowing or they're not doing anything, whether you're an individual living in that Victorian alone or have ten people in there, we, you still have ability to manage a situation, right, where, where our property goes into disrepair.
Very hard once you've gone down that road. That's what, that's what we find. And so, you know, we appreciate you guys taking the time, honestly, to help us think through and educate us on your perspective and, and we recognize you guys as really constructive partners in housing in the area. Um, but we just know not everyone is going to be constructive. Um, and we also have sort of a reality, if we put something forward to the public and take it to town meeting, we're going to get a sort of deluge of commentary. And so we want to have turned over as many stones as possible as we're thinking about this. Um, but if you have other suggestions in terms of maybe issues that have arisen that you've worked through, like I assume you guys are taking care of things like utilities and, and maintenance and management. Like the thirty-day um, lease situation, June. I think we had thought that maybe that was a negative for you, but in your um, comments a few minutes ago, you seem to, I assumed from your comment that you see it as something that provides you flexibility. Is there a leasing structure that's more favorable in your experience?
So the thirty-day thing, um, we weren't that excited about it, but um, it does definitely fills a need. So all of our um, funded properties, let's put it that way, anything that we use state funding for, there's a requirement of a one-year lease. There's no, there's no temporary housing allowed um, in those properties. Uh, so that means that we cannot house seasonal workers. We cannot house, you know, uh, people who work at Tanglewood or you know, Shake and Co. Or, you know, any of those places that desperately need housing. So that was really great for us to be able to uh, meet that need and we have been meeting that need and, and um, we're excited about that because a lot of those community partners have reached out to us and asked us to help them at some point. Um, so it was, it was more about, you know, feeling good about working with the community than for our own preference. Uh, but we haven't been disappointed in it. Again, it gives people flexibility to move on when they need to, um, or, you know, or make a decision, try it out and then decide. Um, so, yeah, I, I think, I don't, I don't know that you'd make that a requirement, but it certainly helped with us. But I think Chris could speak to this a little bit. Um, you know, when we started doing this, we had questions about um, what this structure was going to look like and how it was going to fit into the zoning laws. And um, and so uh, that was kind of a compromise that we came up with, right? As I remember.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
It was essentially a, a transient situation to begin with, not a long-term. Worked in the town because, yeah. You know, uh, so how is uh, June, you mentioned dormitories, um, and, and that can, depending on where you, where you live or what, where you are it, uh, that, that can have some negative consequences. How is this uh, like or not like dormitories or fraternity or sorority houses or things like that?
Right, so, yeah, right, because I've done both. Um, so, um, so the difference is, you know, I, I had someone who was uh, who kind of donated to the, to the process when we did the Windflower and um, he, and then he went away for months and when he came back, he was so disappointed, he called me and said, you don't have anyone living there. I said, what are you talking about? And he said, I drove past the parking lot and it's empty. And I said, because everyone's at work. You know, like, everyone is working, you know, all, all the people there, some of them more than one job and um, that's kind of a thing that I really, you know, full disclosure, hate about affordable housing, right? So we put someone in affordable housing because of their income. But maybe it's a, a go-getter, someone who's like, I want to get ahead. So they're working overtime and, you know, a second or a third job and you know, and we can't put them in, like, we can, they can do it after they move in, a year after, but they can't do it before they move into affordable housing. So um, it seems punitive, like, you know, it's exactly the kind of people that you're, is going to drive your economy and, and, you know, the kind of people you want in your community and we can't house them. This way we can, you know, we can house them. Uh, and so, yeah, we have a lot of, the people there are they're working, they're not, um, it's not, it's a little different. So Eileen and I have both been talking about the other kind of congregate housing where we have recovery housing or we have some other, you know, uh, trans- you know, uh, transition out of homelessness. And that's harder. Those populations definitely need more involvement, more navigation, um, you know, more guidance. That's not what this is, you know, uh, this co-housing that we're doing at Windflower and we hope to do more of is a product of our current housing market. And so we're not really getting, so I mean, obviously, one of the huge differences, fraternities, sororities, dormitories, you have a maturity issue, you know, people who are trying out being away from mom and dad for the first time. Um, that is not what we have here, right? So we have mature um adults who are just coping with this crazy economy. And how do you make that with a seasonal job? Um, you you know, you have to bounce, you have to bounce like you're twenty-five, but you're not twenty-five anymore.
Yeah, a couple of that. So I do need to say lots of people in affordable housing work. The vast majority of the people were.
Oh, no, I'm not saying they're not working.
I know you didn't mean to say that, but
Yeah.
um, and these individuals either can't, you know, they might be on a waiting list for affordable housing, or their income is a little bit higher, still needing, you know, in this, in this housing market, you know, you can make a lot of what used to feel like a lot of money and still not be able to afford to live. So looking at, um, you know, co-housing models is important. Um, one thought I have is that I don't, uh, I know Brad Gordon looked at this, but did he share the the Cambridge Housing Authority? So Cambridge Housing Authority, okay, his son works there and he did a study of um shared housing models. We should, you guys should get your hands on that and look at it, right?
Yeah, sure.
I feel like we're, we're almost, um they are slightly different, right? You know, a congregate housing model and what the shared housing thing is is relatively new, you know, in New York City, it happens all the time, you know, one, one individual will get um, an apartment and a lease and then, you know, informally, they're bringing like three other people in, you know, that they don't know, right? So it's a shared housing model in some way, and they're creating and figuring out structures of how to do that. So that study, I think, speaks more to that cuz that's almost what you were um describing, you know, is more like a shared living environment. And that's essentially what you guys are creating, June, with the with the properties that you're doing, right? Um, and I think I think that the language around the congregate living was leaning maybe more to a slightly different population and a different, it was serving a different purpose originally. So I don't know if there's separate things. Uh, but I think we we should, we should be, you know, Googling shared housing models to make sure that there there might be some helpful information there. But I know the Cambridge Housing Authority just produced a big study on it, and it's somewhere in my phone. I can get it, yeah.
Well, and neither Eileen nor I said that 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 these properties should not have a manager. We said
Yes.
they should not have a live-in manager. And I would argue that um, the few times that we actually had twenty-four seven supervision of uh co-housing, um, it ended up being uh less than productive. There was a lot of like go tell this one that that one, you know, like there, it was, it was, it it contributed to the irresponsibility and immaturity of the residents. And when we stopped doing that, we were delighted to see that when they didn't, couldn't do that. Um, we had better results. So definitely there needs to be management, just the live-in management is not helpful.
Okay, it sounds like it's, it sounds like it doesn't work here in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't work legally and it it just doesn't work. We, so we had um, you know, live-in site managers at several of our properties when I arrived at Berkshire housing two and a half years ago. I've eliminated that. It because it becomes exactly what June said. Suddenly, any situation, you know, like if your neighbor is parking their giant boat in front of your house every day, right? I mean, you don't call some manager and say, you need to deal with it. You go talk to the neighbor and say, this is really a problem, right? Um, and what what happens when you stick that person in the middle, they're suddenly expected to manage everything. Um, so, you know, it's never helpful. But, yeah, I think we're kind of landing on the, like, having some sort of management plan expectations. And maybe even having, you know, in the guidance, some some framework of what that looks like, you know?
I I wanna be respectful of your time and and
So I wanted to move on cuz I had another one that's kind of a a big one.
Yeah, great, excellent. Um, so I'll hold my question then, June, until you
Okay.
you're covering it.
Just as an aside, I I liked what you did with the parking and with the bike parking. I think that's excellent, and I wish we had done that, and I think we probably will add that. Um, but I wanna say something about your uh clause about uh storage. And again, this comes into conflict with housing court because of the bailment law. Um, and if you wanna look that up, it is uh sections three and four of Master General Law, chapter two thirty-nine. Um, and it deals with specifically evictions, but also with any time a tenant moves on and leaves belongings behind. And the requirements for managing that is are really onerous. Um, you have to uh store everything in a bonded warehouse, the closest bonded warehouse is in Springfield, if you can get one. You are the owners, managers are responsible for moving costs, storage costs. Um, you have to let the the person in to, you know, cherry pick their stuff, but then uh, and they can they can decide they don't like the storage that you picked and make you move another one, and the court will support them in that. It is um incredibly onerous. So, um I I know that you're saying, you're thinking that the kind of people that you're gonna have moving into this are people who are like maybe moving out of a house and have, you know, a lot of belongings or, you know, uh, or furniture, things like that. That's not our population. That is not the people that we get in this situation. Um, we deliberately offered zero storage at Windflower. Um, the few times that we allowed people to move things into other places, uh, we ended up in a, in a problem because if you gave them a storage space and they move out and leave the storage space full, now you don't have a storage space to offer to the person who's taking the room, like the room's empty, but the storage isn't. So now you're out of compliance with the law as you wrote it. Um, so, and there's no means to remove that stuff um because of housing court law. So it really does put it in a, um, it puts the owner operators again in a bad position. And it discour-, I think it would discourage people from doing congregate housing, uh, you know, the honest ones. The people that are just gonna get a a dump truck and, you know, haul it away, they'll still do it, but um, it's gonna discourage the honest people.
Okay, totally agree. I had, I highlighted that too. It's really onerous that storage units. It it seems like a great idea. We all did it years ago. We have plenty of properties that have storage units. We've started to close some of them down cuz it's just not um manageable. It's really challenging and people do very frequently leave stuff. Um, and then for all those reasons, June, the play is challenging, and then you throw in, you know, bedbugs into the mix and you're, you're really, it's, it's really challenging. So I would
No, that's
for her not to have that in it.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, June, we need five more.
Um, no, I think, I don't know, uh, Pedro, I I don't have the email that I sent you, but I think, oh, I had one question for you all. Um, uh, the one, I don't remember this, the section it was in, but uh it said that any unit over two hundred and fifty square feet um required either a bathroom or a kitchen. Actually, I have two questions. One is, um, does a half bath count? And the other is um, I have a concern about a kitchen in a two hundred and fifty square foot unit. Uh, I think you're asking your fire department to do too much because if you have a unit that's small and you have people cooking in it, uh, the alarms are gonna be going off constantly. And I know you have a paid fire department, right? Mostly or? Paid and volunteer?
Paid, paid and volunteer condo.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's a good point, though. I'm thinking of a a dormitory situation in the community that they make a lot of thoughts through.
Yeah, exactly. So, um, I think maybe uh rethink the size or I'm not sure what the reason for requiring a kitchen. I mean, the whole idea of communal living is living in community. So if one person has a kitchen and the other people don't, that's you know, kind of throws it out of balance. I mean, that's not your problem, that's the manager's problem. But, um I think allowing a kitchen is one thing, requiring a kitchen, I'm not, I don't understand the reason for that.
Hmm.
It was written as and/or too.
Yeah, so that that clause is written as, um, if you have a unit that's two hundred and fifty square feet, you are, would be required to have a kitchen, either a kitchen or a bathroom. So my question to you is, do you think uh, requirement for bathrooms are?
Yes, I think, I think bathrooms should be required, yeah.
So it's not, not onerous, it should be required.
Yeah.
It's so cost prohibitive, though, June, like
I know, it is, yeah.
Make the whole thing fail. Again, who's gonna do it?
Well, so thi- this is like, I was gonna ask a more open-ended question about what degree of availability should there be for sanitary facilities? Do you
That's true.
Yeah, like yeah, I like
Yeah, maybe have something.
Now per number of units or?
Well, let me just say that the um, the Windflower, where everyone has an en suite bath, is far more successful than uh the the places we have with shared bathrooms. Um, it's not impossible with the shared bathrooms, but uh, it's not as successful. So um, I would definitely say you'd need a ratio of units to bathrooms, um, even if it's a half bath. You know, uh, and I, I think there was some of that, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but definitely there should be a bathroom on every floor or wing. Um, and uh, there should be um, a ratio. I liked what you did with the ratio of the washer dryers. I thought um, that was smart. It seemed to get a little skinny toward the top as you got more units. It didn't really increase proportionally. Um, so I don't, I don't know. I think if it were, if I were doing it, I would change that. Um you know, if you're, if you have that many units, you can afford to put in a few more washers and dryers. Uh.
A lot of times we have this argument, like, we're setting a floor, you could always do more if you found that that worked better for your model. This third one of the things that you know, we're, again, we're kind of like sussed out where the pitfalls are. And so we're trying to strike the right balance between providing a minimum level of service, but not so much that it becomes cost prohibitive and no one will do it.
Well, and you know, at the risk of um, of um, micromanaging, I think, um I can see how you want to create this bylaw so that it is enforceable and equitable to the people who live there. Um, and you don't wanna get into a position of, you know, micromanaging because you would wanna have this many washers and dryers. Uh, but I I guess I would argue that, um you know, uh, requiring the owner to provide sufficient services is an, is a way to upgrade the owners that will participate in this. Did I say that tactically? I almost never say things tactically, so there.
Well, that's one of the things, uh, one, one of our approaches is try to build in design standards, minimum standards so that we wouldn't have to have a public hearing in there.
I absolutely hear what you're saying.
But if you know, the, if the minimum standards, I mean, you know, if you can't come to agreement on what would be a good minimal standard that wouldn't overburden project A or project B, then you need to look at something or else, or else we'll need to have a special permit process.
Right.
I mean, I think, I think monster jars might be the place to do it. The ideal is absolutely to have a, a small kitchen and a bathroom. I mean, that's what we're doing in our uh permanent supportive housing.
But that's a ba-, that's an apartment.
Yeah, it's a tiny apartment, right?
Right.
You know, and it's about three hundred square feet, and they're actually gonna be lovely. But but if we're also trying to say take the old Victorian and allow, you know, eight individuals who don't know each other to live together, which can work really well, be a great thing. That won't work if you tell them they have to have a bathroom in in each one, right? It's just, so I'm, I'm trying to like
Yeah.
find the balance. Or imagine, imagine, you know, I I'm a good person and I'm a landlord and I have a old Victorian and I think, oh, I wanna open this up and I think I can make this work, you know? Um, but I can't afford to, meaning just have logistics I'm trying to put in bathrooms in an old house.
No, but I mean, I mean, it is, it is restricted. I mean, the way it's written now, it's two hundred and fifty square foot.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, it was
Which is pretty rare.
So I think I think what, I think the participants you're gonna get right now, and I think that your timing on this is really great. Um, the, the economic situation as it is now, we're, a lot of inns are just not, uh functioning anymore. It's not feasible. You know, we, we did the whole thing where we had boarding houses and then motels and then hotels and then Airbnb and then you know, and and at this time, inns are not working out. And so we're getting approached by a lot of in-owners saying, you know, couldn't you use this? Like, you know, but um, so I think that's what you're gonna get. And so you're mostly gonna get a lot of bedrooms with en suite baths, and that can work. Uh, requiring a kitchen, that can get, that would be difficult. A- as you say, you know, the, those, those uh, those white elephants, those huge houses, cuz what's happening is in the, in the construction trades, there's plenty of twenty thousand square foot houses going up. They're just brand new. You know, no one's buying the old ones and turning them over. So they sit, they sit on the market for a very long time. And they could be, you know, a housing solution. So I I see that, that, you know, like, um, you're kind of trying to handle both of those things.
Yep. Um, I'm curious if you, um, either you, Eileen, or you, June, have any thoughts on um, number of occupants in a space like per square foot, um, and also like family units, like a, a mom and their child, like how do you see that's like a little bit more complex, um, household situation?
Definitely. So that's a great question. Eileen, do you wanna start with that?
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking back to so when I was trying to do a statewide model for recovery residents when I was in Vermont, this was a big challenge, right? Because so, uh, as June almost does, with so state and federal money, you know, square footage of more like, you know, five hundred square feet for a one bedroom, five hundred, six hundred square feet is sort of like the standard. And I was trying to argue, you know, smaller is okay, right? Um, and it was, uh, so this happened when I was trying to do tiny houses too, right? And and we, we were able to sort of break through that, but some of the funding sources would not at all allow that. So what I'll tell you is that like our permanent supportive housing, like I was saying, so it's, it's two fifty to three seventy-five, I think is the range of the units that we're doing, and they are one individual.
Hmm.
So if we go, if you go beyond that, it's open to two individuals. If you're at that, it's, it's one. So, you know, I don't know, maybe a, a rule of thumb is about that two hundred and fifty, which actually in some ways, if we're just doing, how, how are you counting that two hundred and fifty?
Mm-hmm.
How do you, you know, how do you count the common space? You know, so, I mean, I don't think my bedroom is two hundred and fifty square feet, like if you're just talking about like the bedroom, right? So I guess you have to think about that too, like how you're, how you would count the comments. Cuz if you've got great common areas and you got a lovely kitchen and, you know, bathrooms and laundry and whatever, how much do you need in that? If you're going back to the dorm, like a dorm room is, you know, what? Ten by fourteen or something?
Right.
Certainly not two hundred and fifty square feet, you know?
Yeah. So I would start by saying that all inventory is good inventory at this point. It's, um we need units, period. And we, um we specifically need units for, um the you know, the twenty to forty age group, because that is the group that is leaving the Berkshires en masse. And um, that is also the group that really drives our economy to a large extent. So, um we need units, period. So if we have single occupancy units, it will open up some of the other units. Now, of course, we do not discriminate against families with children in any way. But I, they do self-select. So when we get calls from someone with children and we show them this situation where they're going to be sharing a kitchen and a living room, you know, and a dining room with strangers, um, they, 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 they opt out. They, they opt not to do that. Um, and I And I don't know, I, we certainly don't try to talk them into it um. So, cuz I get it. Um so I don't, I I don't. Think you can. I don't think you can make a policy for that.
No, no, that would be discriminatory.
No, no, I I mean, I don't think you can make a policy to make it work. Or, you know.
Force it, yeah.
Or force it, yeah.
I mean, it certainly happens, again, recovery residents or recovery residents for women and children, domestic violence shelters, you know. Women have a room, you know, that they're in with a couple of children, and they're they're sharing, you know, kitchen and and bathrooms and those kind of things, so. Um but those are, you know. Again, sort of. I don't know, self-selecting isn't the right term, but you know, um situationally required to select, right?
So June, quickly, uh you had made a note about the size limits that we had that we had set forth.
I just was curious about that, why you would put a maximum on it. It seems like if um. If you are trying to, you know, we have a Victorian or a a um an inn or something like that. You just use what you have, so I was curious um. Could could someone? Get an exception to that if, you know, that's what they have and one of the rooms is is beyond your limit or. And I I I guess I wasn't sure what the purpose of it was.
The purpose was was to get more units. So, for example, if you did have a. A big Victorian and all the rooms in the Victorian are, you know, four hundred fifty square feet or whatever. That they would have a limit so that they would make. Out of that one big room, two, two units. We've also put in the in the bylaw that anything in the regs can be. You can secretly from the planning board, from anything, so. There's some flexibility built in there, but that was, you know, that was my idea for having a size limit.
Yeah, that was just a question. I just didn't get it, but uh yeah, that makes sense.
And to keep rents relatively low as well, I was I was thinking.
Again, I, so I feel that the rents kind of self-select as well. Um you know, if you're, if you're offering someone um. A a single room occupancy in a co-housing situation for eight hundred, nine hundred dollars a month. Um that's doable. If you're starting to charge, you know, significantly more than that, uh. I don't get it. I don't know why someone would do that when. If they had any other choice. Um and so, it that's just, that's just as Eileen started out by saying, that's just penciling it out, like. Uh you know, you wouldn't want to put yourself in a situation where you're flipping that room every month.
Although I think there are just such a large number of people who are in fact in that situation, right? Who can only, they don't have any other options and they can only afford eight hundred. But but it sounds like you you feel that your experience is. You're getting the right people in there.
We are, yeah.
Kind of. Kind of working.
I was really impressed with the way you described it to me, the the population that comes through there. Because I'd never really thought about so much seasonal activity, for example.
Yeah.
A month, a month, seasonal is impossibly hard to do with traditional state and federal funding, so the fact that you guys were able to. You know, not do that and and make the projects. Yeah, financially, it's it's huge, cuz it's, as we were saying, like the one year lease is. The standard, and there's good reason for that, but.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean. You're protecting the tenant, right? That, you know, that's why that exists, but not all tenants want that, and the world has changed, right? And I mean, people don't live in the same place for five seconds anymore, by choice, you know, I mean. Especially those twenty to forty year olds, you know, they're they're moving around.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Um we're we're in a process right now, and so again, we appreciate the input you're providing. We're, we're sort of like working through trying to craft the language, and then there will be. More public engagement that we'll get into as we get a little bit deeper and feel like we've got something that. We can put in front of the general public, but um we'll certainly keep you guys in the loop and we'd love to continue to get feedback from you, so thank you again for taking.
Yeah, well, thanks for doing it.
Yeah, I I wanna personally thank you both for taking the time and. And um and sticking with it because it's been. I don't know, close to a month since we talked and you're finally here, so I just want to let both of you know that I appreciate it.
Okay, great. I have my grandkids parked in front of a movie that's about to end, so I'm gonna take off. See you guys.
Have a safe drive back.
Thank you.
If it's all right with everyone, since we spent about fifty minutes, thirty minutes on this, and I. Jonathan had some additional thoughts, but I'm not like in a space to present it, and then he'll probably want to read them in minutes of tonight. We go to table this and continue discussion at the next meeting? Okay, great. Um do we want to do just a quick check on master plan progress?
I just have a few questions.
Sure, sure.
For folks, I just wanted to get an update on where everybody is and talking to their assigned committee.
Yeah.
And or uh board.
Yep.
So, how are you doing?
Um I have, uh as I, as I mentioned last meeting, I have spoken with the uh um. Historic District uh Commission. Uh I want to take my notes on that and um. And uh translate them to the model. Report you gave out to us last meeting, but. Wha- what I want to do, um which I haven't done yet, is actually feed it back to the committee and make it their responsibility. Um so, yeah, and I think that's one of the things you guys said last meeting. Uh and it just kind of urinated in my mind, it takes a while for things to uh you know, actually get in my brain, but. The uh I think it's a great idea to um to make sure that we, the the committees are, continue to feel responsible.
Yeah.
For the master plan, and uh now the historic commission, uh we had a meeting on Tuesday, unfortunately. Um the entire hour of meeting was taken up by discussion of the library, um trustees, you know, with their CPC application.
This is, this is not the historic district commission.
And so we're gonna, we we're, we postponed it until next year, which is in January. So.
Because I know I've found out, and it's like. Quite interesting having these discussions with the um cultural council and what they want to do, and um. We still haven't had a group meeting, but individuals are all like, oh my god, we should do this, and you know, thankful for learning that. The public art master plan idea is actually. In their ware- warehouse, I mean wheelhouse, it's it's something that they actually want to do, so now. There's like, how do we make this happen? And then. My follow-up question is when, if they want to. Add something to the list of things, you know, they're thinking about the master plan, and they. They have a few, I, we have a few items there that they're supposed to be doing, because that's part of the big picture for Great Barrington. But they're seeing another role for the cultural council. And are we, and we're also thinking about climate change, and what are we, do we want to do something special? Are we getting those recommendations or their desires from these committees to not only just do this, but they actually. Pivoted a little bit with their briefs recently since twenty thirteen, and then if so, how do we handle that?
So, I mean, I think the way we set this up initially was, we wanted to just take stock of where are we at implementation of the master plan. Recognizing that the next step may be, do we need to move forward with some sort of update?
Cause I'm getting that all at once.
To like, get the juices flowing is is right, but right now, the like. Planning document for our community is the master plan, and I know Chris has a much. Higher success rate in securing funds from different programs when he can reference it's in our master plan. So if they get too far ahead of themselves, I would worry about that. I mean, specifically related to climate, I think we're already a green community, so, you know, there may be some way to stretch.
I'll quote you back to yourself, because I have notes that I took from what you said earlier, but not now, I won't do it now, but it's.
Yeah.
It's it's just interesting, because I'm stumbling over people wanting to. I mean, it's not something to rise to the level of what would appear in the master plan, but something that is a pivot. Or might be really good, and they want to discuss a little bit.
Well, I think we should start taking notes of these things, because if they pile up, I mean, that that is further indication, I mean, they want to do that. Yeah, so, I mean, I think I think we should ask him, listen, uh are there any other things that uh?
I was thinking we'd have like a second round of conversations about like, and what else, right? Like, this first one is like. Hey, do you know you have this to-do list? And if if yes, how are you doing on your to-do list? If no, hey, you've got a to-do list, let's start talking about this. Are these things still relevant? Um if they're not relevant, and they should just go um on ice until we do an update, please tell us that. And yes, we want to come back and talk to you about, and what else?
Well, Brandy, case in point is the planning board.
Yeah.
Because we had seventeen items that we looked at last time, and we had, and we had that ranking order. And of the seventeen, we had eleven that we wanted to revisit, and so, I mean, there's some that are really. I mean, I'm listening to the discussion, which is hysterical, um but it's really interesting to see what we need to bring back. And I was going to suggest that you and me. And go over the conversation and see if there's a way of addressing it in rank ordering or jump pushing, putting things together. That would make some sense, because there's a lot of ideas, and I know that we like to talk things through. But um action items, because there's something like incentives you raised in one question about something, and then there. All these other issues that are actionable, or you're talking um. About, well, I had to look at my notes, but there was something about rewriting. The bylaws and the. Something else for somebody else based on, anyway, this, there's a lot in our notes that we could address, so I'd want to meet with you, or. Is it better to come back with the group and just do it as a, let's hear the eleven things that we want to do, this is. A best effort at trying to define, even getting transcript notes are pretty tricky, I think. Um Kim did a fantastic job with her brief breakdowns of the ones, twos, threes, and fours, but then you get in on conversations that get overlaid with. Multiple meanings and directions.
We are really good at making complex discussion, um I I would be happy to meet with you.
Because that would be useful, but it's a way to catch the next level, I mean, and and we've got to get back and get into some of those things, but there are a lot of. Issues, but I don't know whether these actually are easy to table or easy to say that they're ongoing, and that keeps it just alive.
Yeah.
It might be something that we really need to act.
And I think that's a valid comment, that some things are going to be ongoing, right? You know, there's just certain aspects of a community and making sure services are provided. And housing is available, that's always gonna be ongoing, so.
And just another thing that I'm seeing in a lot of the, looking at the items that we have. There's some big projects that cross multiple committees and boards. Whether it's wayfaring, you could call it wayfaring, but it's like, let's find out, let's. Create signage for downtown that indicates where this is and this is, and where the recreational opportunities are, and where this is and that is. And this is historic, something or other, what do we want to do? I mean, lots of committees.
Start to wear signage, that brings in everybody.
Yeah, and so it's it's become something that, okay, that's listed in these. Action items or tasks that we all have. But is there another way to look at that to maybe say the town really is clean on doing that? As well as all these committees would like to do it, but they're wondering priority, rank order, time, money, how do we get there? So there's some. Town priority or somebody's setting priorities that we really would like to see that in the next five years or something.
Well, maybe as part of this review, what we should do is take a look at some of the synergy between uh some of the action items from different committees and make sure that. You know, we don't have different silos doing, you know, parallel things.
In terms of prioritization, though, I think. You know, we as a board have offered suggestions to the select board previously about. Issues that overlap between our boards that we think should be on the prioritization list, and I don't know what the timing is normally for prioritization, Chris, maybe you can. Remind us of that.
Yeah, that's a, I was gonna mention that in my uh report, that the select board's next. Meeting to set their strategic goals is January twenty ninth. Monday, January twenty ninth, and they meet. Like every six months on that topic, uh roughly. That helps the select board discuss issues that, you know, maybe are abiding, new ones that are coming up, that should be, you know, the focus of. Uh town staff um. Or budgetary focus, because we'll be starting budget season. Uh so about every six months, the next one is the twenty ninth.
Okay, that's helpful.
The current list, I think, is on the select board's website, strategic.
You have sent it to us fairly recently.
Okay.
It's the color-coded one that's.
Some things have been completed, yeah. So, yeah, they're making something that you all are hearing in your conversations that. You know, you have a lot of committees wanting to do, um. Maybe it's in the master plan, maybe. Maybe it's something the select board want to bring to the top and have the management focus on.
My my thought there would be that we should be very selective. Um because I think. My fear is that, you know, we're gonna go out, we're having this conversation on all of these committees. And many of the ones that I've talked to are like, oh my gosh, that's like a lot of things, or, uh, you know, I didn't realize I had this responsibility, and I, we don't want to overwhelm people. You know, but this is more at this level awareness, and then, like, then let's be targeted about. You know, if somebody can only take on one action item per year, fine, you know, that's fine, and so maybe we can help ameliorate. Concerns that we're gonna have this like tsunami of priorities that are gonna suddenly be fed up to the select board. Uh I think we should, we should be a little bit selective and focus on what we think can be implemented in a reasonably short amount of time. You know, a year, two years, or whatever it may need to be.
Staff can help you be selective.
So Malcolm gave his report out on committees, is, are those? And then Pedro.
You're big on tree, tree is good.
So the trees came back and, just as an aside, I've been telling them to give suggestions, the things that they'd like to do. I mean, there's, you know, reason why we can't just start that conversation. And last night I was on on the conservation commission meeting, and I spoke to them. And I gave them the deadline of their second meeting in December, or at least our first meeting in January, to get back with. Their um comments on the current items and anything that they would like to have discussed or. As I told them, either a new or updated master plan.
Okay, great. You have, you had the energy committee, but they don't exist anymore, so that.
We took energy committee and we're giving it to the select board. So I met with the select board and introduced a topic. They have quite a large list, and so um Steve Bana and I um. Decided we would do intro one night, give everybody the list so they can read through it, and then I'm going to meet with them in. Uh on January ninth. For a more in-depth review, kind of point by point, and they have um energy committee and select board.
So there is an entry, energy.
It's gonna absorb the tasks on the energy committee, because the energy committee is now defunct.
Were you on that?
I was.
I was not, but the energy committee sponsored the solarize project.
Okay, well, that, so I thought that was, that wasn't yours and it disappeared, but now you picked it up, and now it's a select board, that's together. Thank you, thank you. Anything else? Okay, good luck in January. Okay, Brandy, how about you?
And so I already mentioned the select board, um I also have um the ag commission, and I see Vivian is on tonight. Thank you Vivian for joining, um she and I have just connected. Um they uh don't have a meeting until January, so I'll plan to go and meet with them in January. And then I have sent the list to the Parks and Recreation Commission, um and I will be at their December. Thirteenth or sixteenth meeting.
Great, thank you. And you've done the select board, so that's great. Jonathan's counsel on aging. Um what about?
He's catching up.
How about Jeremy?
And Jeremy, how about you? What is your committee, or who are you doing?
I don't think I ever got assigned anything.
I don't think you have.
Because I wasn't at that meeting.
Oh, he's been convenient.
Have you just kind of put your head down and hidden from us?
I know, every time it comes up, I'm like, huh. I don't have anything.
Well, you know Karen really well, you want to help me with parks and rec.
Yeah, I could, yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna me to do that.
I'll go talk to them in December and if they need any follow-up, maybe you can help with that.
Okay.
That would be great.
Is there any CPA items on the master plan?
It didn't exist. Didn't exist, yeah.
How about, Chris, you've got a bunch.
Maybe they want to be included. Will somebody talk to that guy?
At least chief, maybe the town manager and the CW superintendent.
All right, so I think we're making progress. I think that's good, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I think it would be, um, potentially troublesome if the CPC is not part of this conversation.
CPC didn't exist at the master plan, so it doesn't have any test.
But it could start thinking about things that they.
So, so like, I totally agree, I just think that's like the next round of conversations, but I'm not saying that this should be a one and done, like. This is, shouldn't be, I, I actually feel a little bit, um, chagrined that we haven't done this outreach earlier and so. I think this is like a great, you know, shift in the level of communication and just trying to facilitate, you know. More knowledge of what's in our plan, here, have, have more dialogue, back and forth, like what issues have arisen in our community.
The good news, it's on the tenth anniversary of the, um, master plan, so there's something there.
So we should go with cake to all the communities, right?
No, I think, I think it's, what's interesting is discovering people going, oh my god. That was in the master plan, I didn't get to those pages at the very end or realize that, or it wasn't, there's a communication issue from. Boards, volunteer boards, and people have left and they left, and left that idea behind.
Yeah.
So this is a good exercise.
Yeah, definitely.
But, but you raised, but that's a good question about the, you know, what's not in here that we, you know, that exists now that does.
As far as procedural, I mean, I agree with Brandy, I mean, even though I'm asking about what's coming new, that's really just to make notes, not to. Not to start a new process, but I think after we get done with this, then we're gonna have to go, CPC is probably not the only new committee.
No, they're not, and, and some committees are. The Community Preservation Committee, you know, they, they use the master plan to implement. Their spending recommendations, the Affordable Housing Trust too, in a way, I mean, they do have. Um, I, both of those do have some unique experience, I think that they could inform. The development of an updated or new plan. I'm not sure they have any specific, you know, tasks to, they certainly don't from the, from the old plan. Moving forward, I'm not sure what it would be.
I would think the Affordable Housing Trust would be.
I think it becomes interesting as an up, I'm just thinking of the big pictures, like the, the master plan's update or addendum or. Since we're doing this review formally or informally, whichever way, um. To find a place to put in the update, twenty twenty-three update of the master plan, and that shows the growth of the. The town and the considerations, et cetera.
Both those committees were in the master plan.
The good news in my.
Well, also, there's the, you know, there's the community outreach, remember, there's going to be going into different. Whatever that, you know, we have the timeline, I don't know where we'll hit that timeline, but. But when we met with the select board, they really liked the community conversation aspect of what we're doing, and so. This, we're still in our overall timeline of putting our arms around big ideas. And then homage and natural homage, aggregating them, and then going out into community with. The, you know, more ideas on the plate and some of the. Experience that we have, we can get them to start weighing in on issues.
Excellent, thank you all for your continued diligence on that, I appreciate it. Um, so town planning support, Mr. Rumble?
Well, I mentioned the strategic planning year for the select board in January, uh, the only other thing tonight is the, the zoning bylaw. The, the most up-to-date zoning bylaw is on the town website in the PDF form, but the, the E-code, the town code, uh, is also up to date now. And that includes all of, of town laws, including, for example, those. That were meant in the town meeting, the short-term rental legislation, driveway bylaw and things like that, so the E-code is a really. Um, useful, uh, tool, you can find that through the town clerk's page on the, on the town website.
Great, thank you. Any applications coming this way or just December look?
I think you'll likely have a special permit review, um, at your December fourteenth meeting. Not sure yet.
Right, great, thank you.
On our part, special permit review for. Recommendation.
Okay, right, right, not, not a, um, planning board public hearing. No, that's, you would have heard about that like a month, a month and a half in advance, yeah, there's a.
Um, let's see, board and subcommittee updates, issues and concerns, Jackie?
None, thank you.
Pedro?
I, I am thinking part, um, I'll bet I have no time.
Okay, Jeremy?
So, um, housing subcommittee meets next week, Wednesday, um, and we're gonna have the, um. Or actually, I'm sorry, it's a joint meeting, uh, with the affordable house, or if part of the meeting is a joint meeting with the, with the trusts. Um, part two of that meeting, um, and then, uh, the following week on the, see if I got these dates right. Uh, Tuesday, uh. Tuesday, the twelfth, and then Wednesday, the thirteenth, um, the CPC is starting up their step two, um, reviews. Um, with, uh, Tuesday, the twelfth, uh, housing, and then the thirteenth is historic. That, Chris, that's historic and open space that night, right? Or, oh, I'm sorry, it, or is, or is the following Tuesday, is that also, is that separately open space? Or?
No, you're, you're right, they're combined on the thirteenth.
Combine, okay, combined on the thirteenth, and then, and then another meeting penciled in on the. Tuesday, the nineteenth of the CPC, and that's, is, is the way it's gonna work, is that where we're gonna kind of go through all of them?
We, not sure yet, probably.
We're not sure yet, okay. Well, anyways, so those meetings so far for, um, for the CPC.
Great, thanks, Jeremy. Um, I don't have anything, um, we have a note on the agenda about energy storage systems, um, that was, um. A, a request for whether or not we need to think about battery energy storage system in our zoning, um. This would be the example from another community in Mass, and so I'll read through that and, um, come back next. Uh, next meeting, some feedback, um, so citizens speak. There are, there are no citizens in the room right now, but if there are any folks participating via Zoom that would like to speak, you just want to raise your hand. We will gladly unmute you. Going once. Going twice, all right, so we will adjourn without objection at seven eighteen, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Bye, good night, Jeremy.